All right. This time I'd like to call this budget work session to order Thursday, June 16th, 2022. If you'll stand, please, for the invocation. Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here. We'd like to thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you even for the rain clouds that are gathering out there because we sure could use the rain. We appreciate all the things that you give us and all the health and strength that we have. We pray for those who are still trying to get over their situations with their health. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of sin.
Okay, this time I'll ask for the approval of the agenda. Are there anything, any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the first item is items of interest from the last budget session. So if we'll start with the proposal about the finance software, the city suite. And I know after maybe our last budget meeting, Commissioner Moore spoke with me about having IT come in to sort of just make sure everybody's on the same page, make sure they don't have any questions, concerns about what's moving forward and what the timeline might be on that. And that we're estimating enough funds. We did like kind of the worst case scenario of five hundred thousand in different AR group funds. So I don't know if you all want to, any specific questions for IT or kind of let them give you an update of where they're at in the process with just getting, we haven't done anything. Of course, it's not approved, just so that the fact finding we've been doing about that software. All right, you want to start with our questions or do you want to go ahead and touch on?
I tell you, I guess an update would be okay.
Okay.
We don't necessarily have an update. I mean, when y'all have questions up in file, we can do that.
Okay.
I'll ask questions, I can ask questions then.
I mean, I guess, I mean, they can, they're going to provide the information about what this looks like. You all don't really even have to be in here for that part, just more I think what the questions were of like. Things like that. We can go ahead and let Commissioner Morris ask his question.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just tell you upfront, I have a little bit of concern about doing this project this year with a new finance officer in place. I would probably prefer to give her one more year with the current system. And then I think she's got finance training where she'll be collaborating with other finance officers and so forth. And I think it might, I think whenever you're coming, you come into a new position like that and you immediately start changing things, it can potentially cause problems. Because there's a lot of other things that Lisa has to get familiar with, plus maybe other things that are changing besides the software. I agree a hundred percent, we need the soft, we need something different than what we're using. But I'm not sure it would be a good idea to maybe run the current system one more year. I think probably, and I don't know the details yet, but most systems like this, you have to run both systems concurrently for at least one cycle. Make sure that the new system performs and if it doesn't, you can fall back on the old system. That would be one question I may have for you guys if that would be the case. The, I'd like to kind of know like what, what kind of research was done to pick this system versus other systems. This is really important, something we have to get right. We cannot mess this up because it, I mean, if you've ever been here like I have where we missed the payroll on time and stuff, that is a very unpleasant experience. So the, so I'd like to just make sure we have thoroughly run this thing out. Like for instance, we have Spillman software in the sheriff's department. I don't know of anybody else that has Spillman. There must be at least another one in the state somewhere maybe, but I don't like the idea of of in it, of doing some solution that, that may not be a standard kind of solution that folks are using. That's kind of stuff Lisa could talk to other finance officers about during the year. I'd like to, you know, just get a feel for more details about the, when you do a software system like this, it's almost more of an IT project than it is a finance project. So if we decide to go ahead and do it now, or whenever we decide to do it, I would prefer that you guys kind of co-chair the effort between IT and finance. And that'd be the case for any big software system that we decide to put into the county. Like to get an idea of what the status of the current system is. If we, if we purchase the new system this year and what, I'll ask all these questions. Y'all can kind of answer them as, in whatever order you want to. But if, like if we buy the new system this year, how long is it going to take to upgrade it? What's it going to consist of specifically? What, what has to go on with the current system while we're acquiring the new system? Like, does it require upgrades or does it require anything? And then how, and then maybe a little bit more on how we're going to transition from the old system to the new system? And then what are the costs associated with the old system and the new system as we make this transition? If y'all could just kind of hit those kind of topics and I think that would sort of give me a little bit more comfort level. I'm looking for, you know, I, I, every morning on the business channel, they have a new way of describing how the economy's getting ready to crash. This fall, the description I heard this morning was that this house of cards is about to fall. And there's, you know, you don't have to, you can look everywhere and see every bad metric that's crashing. You know it's coming, so I'm looking for anything we can cut that we don't have to do this year too. And there's not a whole lot in here that we can do that too, I don't think. But maybe Shannon, that's a question, a separate question from this topic. If, if there's any other discretionary things, it could wait another year till we see what the transition's going to be after the national election's over with. If maybe things are more stable, I would be interested in your thoughts on that too. Separately from this, so, does that help?
Yeah, I, I think Lisa should go first and answer kind of why, why you want to do this now.
Shannon?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I cannot hear anything that the Commissioner, Commissioner Moore said other than finance and IT. That's about all I got out of that. Can you move the microphone up to the Commissioner's place? I could, I could not hear anything Commissioner Moore said other than I know he was relating something of cutting something out on IT. That's all I could hear.
Pull one of the, pop one of those out, those little. That helps, sometimes they'll pick it up.
Okay.
Basically, there was a series of questions asked that, that both Lisa, Tracy, David and Diana are going to answer regarding the new finance, the proposed new finance software.
That does just pull straight out.
On here, on the conference phone.
On the conference phone?
Yeah, these little things right here, we can pop them out.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm about to say, I didn't want to jerk that thing through the table, but I wasn't going to.
Sometimes they pick up okay from a distance and sometimes no, we'll see if that helps.
They put one at each place maybe. Does that test, does that help any?
Can you, can you hear anything any better now?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me fine?
I can hear you better, yes.
Can you hear me okay, Ronnie?
Can you hear me?
I can hear whoever just spoke.
Does this have a light on it? Do you know it's on or anything?
Yeah, they're, this one's got a green light on it. Does yours have a light on? I don't think, I don't think that they all work. I think, yeah.
I'll try to talk loud then.
Yeah, I was saying move that, but if you can't hear up there, I don't know.
If you can't hear, just toss it to us and we'll pass that thing around.
I, I just heard someone speak. I, I don't know who it was.
It was Andy.
Was it Commissioner Nicklestone?
If it was.
Okay, I can hear right there.
All right.
Wherever he's at, I can hear.
I'm sitting right beside your chair.
So I get, I, I mean, y'all do however you want, but I think Lisa first because you and Tracy came to me speaking about this because of some of the issues with the old system and not wanting to continue to move forward with that. So I'll let you all speak to like what research you did on it and what, why now. Please speak loud.
This was, we were going to purchase this with some of the AR because it was available this year.
Uh huh.
And we, you had spoken about, you know, Lisa designating all of it in case they wanted to clawback or pullback.
Yeah.
So that was kind of why we wanted to speed it up, to use those funds because they were available. It was such a big expense.
Okay, that makes sense.
This really is going to improve payroll more than the finance side of it. When you set up an employee, there are multiple record entries on various screens. But with the new one, we can only do it on one screen. Because in the past, we have changed from screen to screen and forgot to change the employee and some information that's put on an employee. W2s will be created in a PDF file on employee record and no more having to pull paper cuts. It will actually be PDF. We decided not to do employee portal this year.
Correct.
And just wait and do that when we did this upgrade.
Okay.
And with that, they have access to the W2s, the stub drop fees through the employee portal.
The weather. I think some of their work. Got a weather radio.
It's like longevity, the ease, right now we're in banning this.
Mm hmm.
New system.
Okay.
Some of the features that we've been, I just want to talk about anything now. This is research. We add, we add the new. Research, well. We, your conversion with, we have now. Will be the most easiest to transfer over all the information, the transition of it.
With this company now?
Yes, it's the same company.
What other, what other, what other choices do you have besides this one though? Have you guys looked at multiple choices and?
No, didn't, we just went directly with who we're using now.
Oh, okay.
That's all. But if you have to look around.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves with this. And do you see a problem waiting another year? I mean.
Can I, can I say one thing that you told me and I'm not going to speak out of turn, but?
Oh, yes, fine, anybody's speak.
Julia was a one woman show sometimes. That's no fault of her, she just.
Yeah, I understand you how she worked.
She didn't give Lisa a lot of information on what she was doing sometimes. So Lisa's pretty much having to learn a lot of this, what she's talking about all new anyway, as far as that. So whether she learns a new system as it's implemented or learns this old kind of sort of backwards way sometimes of doing things with all this manual entry and manual calculation, she's going to be learning all new anyway. So I think part of their process too, that we've talked about is, is they would rather be learning something that's going to be more streamlined, efficient, less errors because of all this manual entry, rather than learning all this old, you know, school, like doing everything with paper and internet and the system later. That's part of the thing too, is that where they feel like they're going to learn, all have to learn all that and then they're going to learn something new. Because they've not really been exactly, I won't say trained, but not really had to have carried on much of that. She's always just done it all, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's, you know.
I'm just saying Lisa came in like in the middle of the year sort of with the old system. So she's not really run it for one complete cycle. And I just wonder if it'd be good maybe to do that, then she have a clear understanding of the old system to how to transition it to the new system, a better understanding.
I guess I have a lot of confidence in Lisa. I feel like if she can survive the budget process one month after being the finance director and we've worked a lot of, long time together, I think she can do anything. I mean, and I.
Well, I have confidence.
And I want to do, I want to do what's basically beneficial for them as a whole and their department on whatever they think is best, I'll support and go.
I just, I just got a history before I got to county government of these systems, these people implementing these new systems and then them crashing and it causing massive problems.
Well, I think that's sort of the thing, the process too, was going with our original company. They've always been good at support, it's just that it's outdated now and we're in need of an update. So if you stay with your same company, you got to try it in true history with them. You're just going to be updating just.
I'm not against doing that as long as we've looked at the other options and look at what other people are doing. And I mean, if we go ahead and approve it in the budget, that, it's not going to happen tomorrow anyway. We got time to still, still do research and.
Right, you're just allocating some funds towards it.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's going to take a, a trend, this would be, this year we're going into would be kind of the transition year anyway. It's not going to start July 1 with this new thing. You're going to have to sort of like you said, maybe even run them concurrent for a little while just as a backup or just to see, I don't know, you know.
Auditors would probably require you to do that, I would tell you.
So I mean, I, I'm in favor of keeping it in the budget, but I would be fine with you talking to some other governmental entities and seeing if there's something better that we're not, we don't know about, that might work better. Or just if you're more comfortable with them because you know their history and the system and it's just a, an update, then that's fine too. But you know, I guess it, you know, I do agree, it might make sense to see what else out there just to make sure we're not missing something really good, but.
I don't have any lack of confidence in Lisa and your staff being able to do that. That, that's not the issue at all. It's just, it's just that when you're doing this along with getting used to everything else and this is just something we can't afford to screw up, it'll, I mean, our whole system is based on personnel, salaries and most of our, what we spend is for that and so.
I get what you're saying about having to learn the old way and then learning the other new way because you're learning, you got to learn it all anyway. Again, you know, you're learning a new system now, so why learn what you're fixing to learn if you're going to have to learn something new? Again, it's like learning two systems. So that being said, I think it makes sense to, to try to implement it in this next upcoming year as long as the research is there on what else is available. And, and you know, I'm fine with a slow rollout. It don't have to be like.
Yeah, that may take, that might take care of the issue or whatever. How is it, what is the schedule for doing it?
It's all back in a year, starting with one and two systems. It's going to be at least a year after we found the contract that it'll be on the new system finance while it'll be two years with payroll.
Well, and, and it makes sense to, like you say, hold on the employee portal, portal. You know, maybe roll that out, you know, a little bit at a time. I'm fine with that too. I mean, but I feel like we're so far behind times, you know. And, and what Commissioner Morse is talking about in probably the early 2000s and stuff as far as a lot of technology crashing and different things. I'm sure there were a lot of growing pains back then that maybe they've got the kinks worked out now, hopefully, and things can.
What's the cost, 500,000, does that include the?
That was worst case. That was worst.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers that they, y'all gave me, I, I am seeing, we opened 500,000 in the budget.
We put the 500,000 after we met that day. Even on your end of what it would cost and we said 500,000.
With the information that we had, I think that was, there has been additional stuff and I don't believe it's going to be included down the line. That we even talked about the upgrades that has to be done in the system. We have to. Which has got to be done by next, the end of next year. Yeah.
God, you're talking about upgrades. I'm looking at, first official years. And then you'll have to pay. Doesn't add 400, 1,000 dollars. And then after that, first year, you want to pay. And.
What do we pay now? We pay, we pay.
78,000.
The additional 30,000 is for them to host and keep the server. It would no longer be here. Yeah, if you go with the web base, but if you kick it with us, it's the 77.
And if you're in there, it's that will be done.
Hosted and let's be.
Let me have them have. What, what are y'all paying now?
The 70, around the 75.
I thought it was a difference of about 25,000 per year on annual loss.
About 30. The difference between going web with the PM hosting versus what we're currently doing.
And I think like the startup was, that's why we went without around 500,000. Because that 400 plus the 100, the days were kind of estimates, it was about the initial startup.
So the, so what, with the current system, what do we, if, if we, if we put this in this budget and pursue it, go pursue it, what do we, what do we have to do to the current system? I mean, is there certain, are we going to save any money on the current system by making a quicker decision on this one as far as anything we, or there, you said there are certain things we have to do then already or?
Yeah, basically we got an upgrade of AB suite on it. To say no, our initial thought for a group of new system would not have like AB suite. We thought they going to come up with a update for current AB suite or this year's double.
Uh huh.
We're going until 2023. By the end of 2024. Last year, 2023, yeah, by the end of 2023, we got to go to AB suite 7.1.
With the current system?
With the current system, because they have a new system.
How much does that cost?
That's 21,000 dollars plus we got a, have a new server. We may be able to use existing server we got or either by.
The cost of that is, the upgrades that has to be done in the system. If there is a server available, then we can use that server. And if not, that would be something else.
For what system still, the old system?
Yes.
Okay.
With the AB suite.
Okay.
They did enough.
Thought we didn't have to come.
They did enough that on Marion that we have to do in order for us to communicate with them. So it's on their side that they have, this happened.
Okay.
That there's some upgrades you're going to have to do regardless.
Yes.
And maybe even buy a new server, possibly.
But that is what it is. I mean, there's nothing you do about that.
Right.
We thought, we could, we thought the system, they could do that. Go over to the new system, fast move and have to worry about all this.
Oh, okay.
My understanding, we've got to do that.
But it's going to take too long for that, okay. I feel a little better about it now because by definition, if we approve it now, it's still going to take a year or two to do it.
At least, at least.
Right.
And we could certainly still do like what you're saying, once the funds are, are budgeted, we could reach out to other entities, get some other information. What we're going to do if you approve anything else, move and approve any of the contractors, you have.
Yeah, we don't have to spend them.
Right, we can come back and say, this is what we've got and you've got five options and this is still the best one, or maybe it's not.
Okay.
We can, we can certainly do that.
Yesterday, yeah, I have got a couple of references. One of them has not called me back, but I did speak to a gentleman. Worked for the city of North Charleston. And they were on GMs about eight years ago. He kind of laughed at me, at me when I said we was currently on GMs. And so they transferred over to what Harris has now is, in this, in this. Which is the version, is a, is a version of city suite, but it's, they have to log in like to the finance separate, payroll separate, cash receivable separate. This is going to roll over under, they're going to, they're transitioning into city suite as well. It's like one umbrella, one login to access everything. We did not have nothing bad to say about it at all. We were kind of looking forward to them actually transitioning over. But their, you know, their IT department's handling, they going to want to host their own versus with them hosting. I'm waiting on another gentleman to call me back who's actually on city suite.
It's better, I think it's better for them to host it and not us, don't you?
The other thing I just want to mention here that we talked about with Carol this morning is the data conversion, I'm not sure what, how many years y'all decided on the current year.
Did you talk to?
Carol, the lady who is owner of the Harris project here in CD.
Oh, city suite?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think if y'all went on current over, current year plus one, if that's what y'all want to do. In order for you to use the old system and do inquiry on it regardless of the number of years that's back there, you still have to pay to get that server up and going. That's going to cost somebody too, I don't know, but in this 500,000, a lot. But that needs to be there. And then again, you've got to figure out where is the, the life of that server and how long does it go live.
And it would be, it wouldn't be cheaper if I break four years to pay the cost. Paying the maintenance.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we talked about top of that. Five years.
So y'all work, y'all want to cover five years? We talked about years, we just talked, I know someone said that we need to like five years of payroll. And we said, we do the same thing with payroll, we find the same thing with the finance side as well.
So you go just like converting it and try to make this on server.
Is there, is there a requirement to do a certain number of years by like auditors or anybody like that?
There's a retention schedule.
Yeah.
Different finance records have different retention schedules. And we, I know we took ours long, we have to even the paper backup.
Mm hmm.
Full of them, so it would always, it's not convenient, but we'd always have the paper backup if we didn't have it in digital form at that time.
Okay.
Most anything's, some things.
Maybe that company that Tracy talked to that, that made this same conversion, looked at some other companies too. Do you know if they did or not? Ask if he did or if.
And wouldn't that other person you're waiting on call you? You can ask him too, same question.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm.
Urgency, but.
They want, even, even if you decided to do it, they're, they're probably not even starting talking to us till around September as far as getting our game plan, how we operate, how the county.
Gives you some time to do some more research.
It's, it's not going to happen.
That's good, yeah, I'm more comfortable with it then to do that. But one thing, one thing I'd like to do as you look at others, what's the cost of one versus the other?
Yeah.
And then to that and then also what are other people using besides this, just so we'll. Yeah, maybe you're just like counties or whatever. And. And then, and I wouldn't base this decision on cost though, I would base it on what's the best value, the lowest risk to having something go wrong and all that, not just make it a cost decision. But it would be interesting at least to know what the costs are compared to other systems.
You know, and definitely user friendly as far as when the employees start trying to enter the portal and stuff because the one login sounds good. And I'll give you an example, with the barber board, we have to renew our license online now. And we have, I have like a barber shop permit and I have my license. Well, I have to create two passwords and two usernames to renew each certificate when I should be able to go in under one username and one password and renew anything that's in my name, right? No. So I have to create two different usernames and two different passwords for the same portal to renew two separate, it's, so that's, I see how that could be crazy. And the fact that you said that one login for everything makes so much sense. And it sounds like that's a new upgrade or whatever, so that's a good thing with this. So that would be something, going, looking at these other companies, you want to see that they're.
Yeah, all that user friendly risk, all, so what, is this, would it be appropriate to ask the auditors their opinion on this? Or have y'all had any discussions with Kelly or anybody?
That might be a good resource because they work with different.
I have not, but I know one of the options in city suite is you, you can give your auditors viewing access, which would cut down a lot of us having to download, send them papers and.
Oh, like remote view?
View options, although you'll be, not be able to like get in and mess with them or.
That would be bad.
That's in the package you've got.
They could look, yeah, get in.
Okay, good, I'm, I'm good with it then for the sense that we've got, it's not going to happen overnight.
Sounds like we're eight years behind North Charleston. So, yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, their comments. Yeah, comments, IT comments about anything else that y'all would. Y'all just stay engaged in this process.
I don't, I mean, I don't know how much how in depth they, if they want to take it over, which is what they.
Yeah, I think.
City Suite, you mean? Y'all just look at, maybe ask questions.
And look through it if you've got questions.
We'll look at it.
We could have some next meeting if we need to, yeah.
While y'all are in here, uh, I'll ask a cybersecurity question because the school board was just talking about that with us, um, about how much money they're having to spend, um, to upgrade and keep all that stuff, uh, free from some type of cyber security attacks. And I guess, were they talking about insurance or are they talking about, I don't know if they, it might be two separate things. Cybersecurity, insurance, our cybersecurity, just things that we can have in place to help protect our stuff from an attack, and I'm assuming that's two different things.
Okay, it is. I think it's, you may be considering like the association, kind of issues that have some, we are covered, we're backed, and that's not a lot of money, but if you, you know, hit off of these, uh, how do you remember, you know, if everybody's paying for, you know, the fee or two weeks, I don't really do have the, so even if they were to give us ten thousand dollars or twenty thousand, I don't know if they're covered. But we are covered, and we also have additional stuff that we can help with as far as the cybersecurity. And hopefully there's more happening, so y'all can bring it back to us, and we'll get it fixed as fast as we can.
It's becoming an issue with the liability pool about the cost of that insurance going up.
Yeah.
One thing is, you need to be very aware and be careful.
Yeah.
There's some time, that's a hard job.
Yeah, exactly. Better than being shut out and having to pay some kind of ransom.
Some entities pay large insurance policies, whether than that, like they have a certain amount, if you, the more you choose to add to your policy that you can pay out in there, ransom kind of wear thing.
That might be what the school board is doing, they may, I think they're paying an insurance in case, but Haywood County was hit two years ago, I think when schools started back, and, um, right, right when schools started back, they were hacked and rans, it was ransomware, and they had to rebuild it. They, they were like two weeks later starting school because they couldn't do it because of their, that attack, so it's, it's something that gotta take serious for sure. Gotcha. Well, if you hear of anything else we can do to make it safer, besides just trying to warn people, like you say, that's the best thing, is to educate people so they don't click on something they shouldn't, because that's the only way they can get in really. Or what? Thank you.
If it's okay, I'll run through that, um, that stack of documents I gave you with all the replacement budget sheets, just got that sheet on the front with some bullet points on it.
Uh huh.
I'll just run through them real fast, and if you've got questions, we can stop on any of them and talk about it. We just wanted to give you some of these things we discussed last meeting that were gonna be changed in, in the, in the budget. So the first one, Commissioner Minenhall, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Are you able to access your documents that we emailed to you?
Yes, I, I have them pulled up right in front of me.
Okay, so the one I'm getting ready to go over is the one that has that the very top line says four hundred and fifty thousand dollars added to A R P A for Arts Council renovation project?
That's what I'm looking at right now.
Perfect. So that is something that we've added. We talked about that a little bit, about might, it might be about four hundred thousand dollars, um, to go into the Arts Council budget, because at that time Eddie was working on the grant that we were hopeful that we were going to get for that renovation. So yesterday we got the letter awarding us the grant, which is really exciting, and I'm not gonna talk a lot about the projects, I don't wanna steal Eddie's thunder, because he's working really hard on it, we've been, he's been kind of updating you on that too.
I stopped by and talked to him on the way up here and told him we'd, we'd like him to come to a meeting and.
Yes.
Give us an update. He asked to kind of, get it until July so he could get something together for that, because he's fixing to go on vacation.
It's gonna be a huge catalyst for this area, what he's, what the plan is for that building, so with the grant we received is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's awarded to completely remodel the remainder of the building connected to the arts place. It's from the Rural Transformation Grant Fund administered by the Rural Economic Division, North Carolina Department of Commerce. So what you'll see in this page here is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars added in as A R P A funds, because when he got a quote to complete that entire project with all the vision that he's had to give us grant, one point three million dollars is the estimated cost of that project. So with the grant coming in at eight fifty, he's asking for four fifty added from A R P A funds to be able to just completely renovate all that space, which is a great, a great deal, because we're already getting to eight fifty, so that's the first sheet you'll see that's changed out of your budget. The next, um, portion is where we discussed at the last meeting, moving over the animal shelter to the A R P A funds instead of financing it, so we changed that and took it out of, out of that, out of that area, so you'll see that change. And I did, while we're on the animal shelter, I did reach out to Perry and speak to him about anything we might could possibly cut out of the animal shelter to save any money. And he was in agreement that the only way we really can save any money on that particular building is to cut square footage. Square footage is gonna cut it, it's estimated at about two hundred dollars a square foot. Um, we're budgeting one point three to be safe, but we're figuring a six thousand square foot space is about one point two, give or take. He said there's not really anything, any real, you know, bells and whistles in that building, the expensive part of that building is the structure itself. You have to do a specific building type that is abuse resistant, expensive flooring and wall treatments to eliminate permanent smells. So he said if we're interested in cutting the cost, we would just need to look at cutting the square footage. So other than that, he didn't think of anything else that we could really pull out of there that he's figured in to save any funds on that, so we can talk more about that if you, if you want to, about trimming down any size on that to save any, save any funds on that, on that project.
Just out of curiosity, ain't, ain't that square footage kind of needed though?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we definitely need the square footage, I mean, I think the, the, in meeting with the Animal Shelter Study Group and visiting other counties that are even smaller than ours on what they currently have and what our needs are, and that we're always full. You know, even if we went to a five thousand square foot, which would save us two hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, but in the big scheme of things, I, I think we're gonna be back to, we always had issues with trying to have space for seized animals, holding them for court cases, animals you need to pick up. And we just really hate to continue to tell citizens we can't come out and pick things up, because we're always full, and we don't want to be in that situation.
Also means later on you might have to add on, which is probably gonna be more, more expensive then too, so.
Yeah, and who knows about building cost, I mean, with, with everything that's going on, it's, you know, it could be up, could be down, and we, we hope that would be, be an appropriate amount, but that's why you see that there.
Is that, that's not based on it being at a particular location or anything?
That's based on not buying any land to be able to, would be based on if we put it on county owned land already.
Which would logically be meadows, right?
Hopefully be meadows near the Friends of Stoke Shelter.
Water and sewer, okay.
Everything already there, especially where it's all our county resources there, so if we had to add land into that, it was certainly up it.
Grade it too, or is that not included?
What, Neil?
Grade it all too?
Well, if we're gonna demo the, if we're gonna demo the prison property this year, we'd wanna make sure we knew what location we wanted to put that in before we did that demo, so we'd be sure, I'm sure you still need some, but we, so we've already built in some extra funds with that amount that should, should.
Okay.
Then after that one, you've got the hundred thousand dollars added to A R P A for Wanaco, even three hundred for Pinnacle. We had those together, but we had one hundred from financing in the old sheet, and then we had the three hundred from financing for Pinnacle in the other part of the budget. Um, the two fifty's still coming out of SCIF grant, which we've already gotten that money from the state grant, so this would just mean that we would be using.
Oh, no.
This, this would just mean that we would be not financing any of that and be just moving forward with just the two fifty and grant and the rest of the A R P funds. That's been changed in your budget. We had some discussion the last time about some money that was put one way in Danbury Water and one way in Regional Sewer. We weren't sure at that time if we could use those funds towards that. Since that time, Tracy and Lisa have confirmed that we can, so we moved that fifty three thousand twenty five for Danbury Water into A R P A. And Regional Sewer was already in A R P A, so there was no change there. And the six hundred thousand added to ARPA for new Board of Elections building, we had had that originally in as finance, and that's been moved into that A R P A line as well. Then since our last meeting, Natural Resources got an additional grant, it is a reimbursable grant, it is two hundred and forty six thousand seven hundred and sixty one dollars, which has to be added to their budget, which looks like our budget is going up, of course, because it is a reimbursable grant. You have to put the money out first and we'll get it back later. So then the next one, there's a sheet on this, and I'm gonna let Lisa or somebody pass out as I'm talking about it, the requi, the retiree insurance, um, expense, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. So basically, that, there was an error in last year's budget on this retiree insurance. That between the changeover between Lisa and Julia that flowed over into this year's budget, and they picked it up as when they were going back through the budget, looking at it. Basically, you can see what happened on that sheet she just passed out. When they, when the retiree insurance was figured last year, it was figured thirty employees times the monthly amount for twenty thousand nine forty two seventy. That was the amount that was put in the budget for the entire fiscal year, so that's only one month of expenses. So when this budget came through, that amount carried over into there, it should have been multiplied by the twelve months. So we have to add the additional two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty four cents to it to make it correct, to actually pay the retiree insurance the correct amount. So, that's, that's a big number, but, you know, it's, it's not right, and it's been found, it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be fixed. So, and we're, you'll see it, you're gonna see it come up again probably in a large fifteen page budget amendment towards the end of this month, that for all the pullbacks and everything in there, it's gonna have to come from somewhere to fix the part from last year.
Remainder.
Remainder.
Okay.
You'll, you'll see that kind of rear again, so.
You wanna finish the quarterly review in the next, at our next meeting?
You'll see it at your, yeah, you'll see it at your next meeting. Um, and then you'll see in the jail line, there's eighty nine thousand five hundred, also a reimbursable grant, we were working on that before the budget, but had not received it yet. And got notification we received that. It's for some COVID things, some new doors in the jails, some, it's a, it's a pretty good upgrades, also reimbursable, so it does up the budget. Emergency management has received a reimbursable grant for three hundred and six thousand, five hundred and seventy eight dollars. It was a big grant month last month, everything started coming in. Um, and that is for some really neat equipment, like some underwater, I think.
Sonar.
Sonar things. The day we received that grant funding letter was the day that the other county came in to lose, like, use the same exact equipment. Our units, um, such a rescue there, so it's a really, a really good piece of equipment we're able to get with that grant. Then the twenty two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars removed from D S S Family Giver Program, Care Giver Program, I think, we didn't actually remove that just because there was a, it's not going on anymore, correct?
Right, Stacy sent an email and said they were not gonna do that program this year.
So that's cut out, yeah, and then we removed that, what we talked about last meeting, the hundred and fifty five thousand, seven hundred and seventy two from the EMS. There was a quick response vehicle in there that we removed, but the employees were in the employee line already, not out as a new item, and we didn't remove those when we removed the vehicle, so those got removed, that is a savings there for that. And then behind that, of course, is all the sheets that reflect all those changes that we made there. That, that brings us up to date and everything is, is, is correct on there now. And I think a couple of other things that we talked about at the last meeting, that turnover analysis report, I emailed you all one copy of it, there's a copy today also. Did that give you all what you were looking for on that data, or was there anything else we could provide on that that would help you further?
Well, yeah, this is, this is kind of what we asked for, but I, I would like to see it by department and have this pie chart by department, so.
Pie chart by department.
Yeah, by department, if you've got that, if recorded that way. Maybe not every department, but maybe the ones that have significant turnover.
Seems like it's.
Yes, yeah, the top, the top five or so of, of that to see what, where that's from there.
Yeah, let me see what's up.
Sheriff, jail, EMS, and D S S are the top four.
Yeah.
Or in twenty twenty two anyway. Twenty, the twenty twenty year, that's the COVID year, basically, things were all over the place anyway that year, so that's probably, that's when COVID started, so who knows?
You'd hope that would be stabilizing some now, but with some of the stuff going on with the job market, it's really hard to tell, I mean, there's, there's jobs now that people would not used to dream of leaving here for, that might leave here for now, because they're, you know, triple the pay they used to be. There's things going on in the private, private world that nobody could ever anticipate was gonna happen as far as that with rates.
Looks like we're on track to be about like we were, um, the last, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, you got, you know, in that hundred to ninety five range, and then you've got fifty so far this year, which is about halfway through, so.
I would, I would have hoped.
It don't look any better, but it don't look any worse so far.
I'd have to see it be quite a bit less, but I.
Yeah, you would hope.
Do with the pay plan implementation, and it is trending, I mean, one oh four to ninety five, and then, I don't know what it'll be this year, but I think, it looks like it might be less than ninety five.
Well, the pie chart's looking more, less as far as the pay as being a reason, is, is to get smaller pieces of pie.
Love it's just changing, moving, changing careers.
Yeah. Career change and better pay could be synonymous.
Absolutely, absolutely can be.
Maybe just do the three or four, whatever, the biggest ones.
Top, top ones, yeah, but.
There was a pie chart on that, which would be handy.
And then I know in the school meeting, we discussed a little bit, Perry's already reached out to the School Maintenance Department, it's gonna get started really soon on that facility study, so that's gonna be going underway soon, not sure what we'll have there, it'll take some time at a lot of schools for him to get to.
Uh huh.
And I know Wayne's not here, but Wayne did ask a question about matching grants for fire departments, and I, I don't really know how to look into that that much, because I don't know what they might be applying for or not applying for, and without a real true number in mind, kind of like what we did with Eddie's, we knew that's, we need four hundred and fifty to go with what he's got, so I'm not really sure how, how we would do something like that. Unless you set some amount aside for that or kind of profits for matching funds in some way.
If there's one grant they have that happens every year, I don't, I don't remember the name of it, but you might look at that one, see if anybody's applying for it.
Yeah.
I'm sure Wayne would know exactly.
Yeah, he should, yeah, I was hoping he would be here to answer some of those questions, so.
Remember Emma Dawn, is Emma Dawn still out at Sandy Ridge? She used to do that grant every year for them.
I think so, I wish I had to him to check into that.
Annual grant that's open every year.
The fire and rescue, we, we, there's, there's COVID actually, um, it's my time, normally they do those in May, apply one, first probably either, it's not to the several, we're also there. And then there's another one around August, and a lot of those are matching grants.
Uh huh.
And I've got a couple of other things just to bring up, and I know we have a lot of talking to you about the school budgets, I'm gonna save that for last, because there's a lot of notes in here about that. We, you know, we discussed when Eric Cohn came in at the meeting about some issues that they were having in their department. We looked into that overtime in the sheriff's office between the sheriff, like, and divided it out by different officers and what they do, all the road officers or S R Os, and there just was not a tremendous amount of overtime there to even look, look into, you know, as far as paying out. I did reach out to Stacy Alms, because we know that department does receive a lot of the comp time, to see what, she divided that out for us, and then looking at some of those departments, trying to come up with something that would be more fair across the board, rather than just sort of picking up a department or two and just paying those overtime, instead of, you know, everybody's overtime or comp time. And I, and I know Commissioner Morris would know, because he's been here, but I'm not sure if you all realize, the way our current policy is, comp time works, you, you accrue it at an overtime rate. Once you get to two forty, the comp time, you start being paid out for it, it stops and it sits there as your time, you have to take it off first, you're required, if you go on vacation or you're out of day, you take comp time off first. But that two forty, anything you earn above the two forty that's sitting there on your time, you're paying out for each pay period. Two forty is, and you might be able to speak to how that, I know why it came about, because of some huge payouts in comp time.
Yeah.
I don't know what the process was behind the two forty number, because, you know, most people don't get to two forty, it takes a long time to get to two forty, it's over six weeks of time, so they would never access those funds until they retired, left, you know, whatever happens. So we were looking at some ideas of things we might be able to do to incentivize some of these as far as that, if we reduce that number maybe, that would be something that would be fair to all employees. We went with something more like a number like, just, just, just our thoughts, seventy five would be a two week time period, and, and we looked into the number of employees right now that are sitting at above seventy five for overtime. are sitting at above 75 for overtime. Not that many, I think if we paid out each and every, there's a sheet on that too. If we paid out, if we paid, these are all the departments that have overage and comp time, over 75 hours. If we paid out every solitary employee who has overtime sitting over comp time for 75, it'll be about $24,000. The money has to be paid either way, and a lot of times.
I mean, if you changed it to 75, you'd have to pay everybody at that.
You need to, you would need to get everybody.
That would clear the slate.
We need to clear the slate. You wanna get people that have gotten, you know, some have got 200 hours, some have got, you'd wanna clear them down to 75.
Yeah.
Some, the vast majority of your employees are never gonna have 75 hours of comp time. It's just those ones that are always working over, in departments that are affected by this, like DSS, jail, sometimes the sheriff's office too. If you did that, that might be an incentive, and it might, and to me, would be a little more fair way to, to look at doing it, rather than like the paid overtime just in certain departments. That way, people that are truly working a huge amount. And with 75, even if they earn the 75, they take one week of vacation, they're right back to 37 and a half. So the averages are not gonna be as much. I think it also reduces a little bit of our audit liability, because like Lisa and I were talking about today and Tracy, it, when we, somebody retires and they automatically have the maximum payout for 240 for comp time, if they've got that, whatever their vacation is at that time, but hasn't rolled over yet, depending on what time of year they retire, sometimes those are huge budget amendments have to be done to pay those out of contingency. This way, you kinda could budget a little easier, knowing that the most you're gonna pay out for comp time is 75, and the employee feels like they're not having to sit there and wait to get those funds. I've got these 240 hours banked over here, I'm never gonna see until.
Never gonna get the use of them.
Until I leave, you know, until you leave. So I just wanna throw that out there as an idea, maybe something a little more across the board that we could do, that might be, you know, a little bit of a morale booster for some of those that work a lot of comp time, that, you know, over 75 rather than that 240, a two-week period instead of a six-week period. So just something to.
Is there any labor board involvement in what those numbers are? I don't remember if there is or not. Like with the EMS stuff we got into.
Yeah, the EMS is a different thing, and they wouldn't be affected by this, cause they already get their pay, the, the pay part of it. Yeah, I just, like I say, I just don't know what the, I don't know what the rationale was for the 240, um, but I, I do know why it was done, and I know there were some large, large payouts, and I know there were some people that have retired since, that have left with tons of comp time on the books, you know?
Yeah.
Like, so with that, but just kinda wondering, you're, do you wanna think about that a little bit?
Yeah, they did some kind of big transaction way before I got here the first time, where they, I remember that, where people had all this, and some of them didn't ever get paid for it, right?
Yeah, yeah, there were a couple of people that really had a lot on the books that.
Yeah, right, not happy.
And not, it's not, not really fair if you work that time and it's your time, you shouldn't get paid.
That's the thing, the people who are earning the most comp time are gonna have the hardest time taking the comp time, because obviously they're.
They're the only one there to do it.
Yeah, and so to take time off to take their comp time, that's, there are other coworkers in a bind probably, I mean, you know, cause they're obviously a little shorthanded or.
But to know that if you're one of those people that's earning tons of comp time, like somebody's have 100 hours right now, that's your average, if you're working a few hours a month, it feels like you're getting paid out for your overtime that way.
The most anybody's got's 240.
240 is the most anybody can earn, that's by the cost.
Right.
That would also make a little bit simpler of a policy change than trying to start figuring out, how do we change the overtime policy for DSS, or how do you change it for the sheriff's?
Well, that's what I was worried about with the jail or the sheriff's department, cause I was like, I know there's some issues other places, and we can't just fix one, make it incentivized for them and not incentivized for others, I mean.
Right.
Seems fair to do it this way, and I'm, I'm, would be fine with 75 hours, 100 hours, um, you know, whatever, I mean, 75, I guess, keeps it with the, the work week, um, amount of time.
It's a, it's a two-week period, and majority of, everybody takes a week off, actually at least. So, you know, and throughout the year, you're required to take comp time first, so everybody's got dentist appointments, you know, whichever, they're gonna take other times off. There's not a tremendous amount of people that are gonna ever get over that amount anyway. Yeah, just.
The 24,000 or whatever you said would, uh, 24, 371 would get everybody back to 75. And then, I would think if I was an employee, it'd be like a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel for me not going away.
Yeah, if you're one of those people that's got a lot of comp time on the books, that'd be a nice, you know, payday for you to be able to get some of that that you've already worked for turned, turned back, so.
I think it would, would help, um, with the jail, the sheriff's department, DSS, I know some of those are the top areas that we're looking at.
Yeah, just, I mean, you know, if you want, if you still want us to look further or anything in the other, but I'd, like I say, we looked at the numbers on some of those, and I just didn't feel like that there was enough overtime within, within there by each, by the departments we were talking about to, to change the policy on overtime pay. It's like, the more fair, fair way to do it.
Yeah, just say, look at three weeks too, and see if there's any advantage to do three versus two weeks maybe, or before we decide.
Yeah, if you don't, yeah, if you don't mind running those numbers.
Going from 240 all the way down 75 is a big drop, so.
Yeah. I guess, kinda like what Commissioner Cox was saying, with the people that, we were thinking that, the same rationale of, if you already can't take the time off, you've got that much comp time, you're never gonna be able to get your time to be used up, so you're thinking, how about three weeks off is hard, so.
Yeah, if you wanna run those numbers.
Yeah, if you can do the three weeks.
For the next budget meeting, just to.
Maybe we need other policy changes to address the fact they can't take it off too, possibly, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Or other changes.
Yes, I agree. Um, and then, the only other couple of things that I have, before we get into school budgets or anything you all wanna discuss, is, um, I had a note from our budget goal session that I didn't add over in some of our notes for our first budget meeting, that Commissioner Morrison mentioned wanting to look at the idea of paying, budgeting to pay the hospital operations committee for meetings, and so I, I reached out to him and asked sort of like, just some information on that, on the members, and how many times they meet. Looks like you'd be paying an average of about nine members. If you paid the normal outside meeting rate for most other meetings, which would be $40, you'd be looking at about $360 a month, or $4320 annually, assuming they would continue to meet monthly. So we don't have that in the budget right this minute, but I didn't want to not bring it up, because it was asked to, for us to look at it, and we did not have it, have it in there. That would, if you added that to your budget, that would go into your government body miscellaneous line item, as which is where all those committees would be paid from.
I'd like to do that, since everybody else gets paid for it.
Okay, and then the remaining ARP funds, after, after this, what you've looked at today, if you left everything, not saying that you're going to, but if you left everything just as it is, with all the ARP funds exactly where they are, including that 2.4 that you've allocated previously towards broadband, that's gonna leave $843,905 unallocated in ARP funds.
How much again, how much?
And that's, that's moved into animal shelter and AR, that's everything we moved in there, the animal shelter, the Board of Elections. That would really be the only thing, if you approved this budget with what's in it as far as capital projects, the only thing you would really be financing would be the remainder of the courthouse renovations, which would be $6 million. So that's everything from there.
Is that the amount that we would then have for matching funds for other?
Yeah, I mean, if you, that would be your.
It'd be one use of it, one potential use, right?
Yeah, potential, yeah, but you know, that would be unallocated, you could designate to use toward any.
For matching, oh, but you could, but that, does that include already taking the 400 out for the arts place?
It does, yes.
Okay.
That's everything that we've, we've gotten in this budget.
So you could use it for matching, or you could use it for just buying something else?
Just use it for a large, large one-time, or you know, anything else that's there.
Used for school?
Yeah, so I've, I've, I've got a note about that, on like, we talked about, we did check, Lisa and Tracy sent an email to Kara with the School of Government about that question that I asked about the current expense, and, and they said that that was no different than how we're using it everywhere else, it's governmental use, we're gonna pull that money the way we use it, so it can, it can be used that way. So that's many, that's there, so. Oh, yeah, the, I don't think I have that on my sheet.
I do, I do.
So, we've talked about this a few times, and we did just finally put it in the ARP. If you look at your, there's an ARP sheet, I think it might be your back sheet, page 90, or, yeah. On the very back of those budget changes, page 93, ARPA fund, we did add in there some funds for renovating some of this space in this room. You know, back in the past, we all sat in one area, which would be fine, now I'm sure I'm again, but I think we've gotten used to a little more space in here, and not being elbow to elbow up there. Um, and other, if you go in other chambers in other counties, they typically have sort of a, you know, a seat box on each side with additional microphones, whereas Ty would have his own mic and seat, Lisa would have her own mic and seat, Amber and myself.
Or horseshoe, kind of.
Yeah, it was a diaphragm, it all going the way around, um, you know, adding the additional mics, building the area here, and if, you know, if we wanted to use some ARP funds towards some new chairs besides these that were moved over from the courthouse, I think. So we did put that in the ARP line, and I think, we asked Stuart, and he just gave a high number of, I think, was it 15,000, just because of the price of wood and things like that, could be less, just additional mics. And additional mics are expensive, cause I think we really need some additional microphones, so that everybody has a designated microphone in, in front of.
We also need them where, when people are on Skype or on the.
Yes.
EV or on the phone, to take in here.
I think there's enough funds out there to think about some kind of a table or something you could put into their, feed into the, feed into the live stream, so.
Yeah, we could use some additional technology upgrades in here if we're streaming live and people having to Skype in and stuff.
That is something that I, that we didn't note on our little.
Make it cover these chairs, if you raised this up, put something under it or raid, like build something under it to raise this up, so the arms wouldn't.
That's the problem with those, they don't fit correctly under there, and they just get torn up. Other than that, they're not by shape.
No, they're not by shape. We cover them maybe, but you could see what the price difference is.
Yeah, we did, we recovered all of these during COVID, and it was cheaper than buying new chairs.
Mm-hmm. That's a good idea.
And I, I've got a lot.
300, 300, yeah.
Yeah, I think we got it, you know, just.
Especially the microphone stuff, so everybody can hear.
Yeah, and not having to move tables in and out, and you know, all those things would be nice too, so. And, cause I, I haven't checked the audio yet from the meeting with Board of Education, but I hope it was, we put that small mic in the center, I hope everybody picked up okay with that one, so.
Does that include, does that mean to add on to what we've got here, or is that what you're doing?
Yeah, we build out.
Build around a little bit.
Yeah, Stuart said, if there goes something on, it might come out in front right there with my handicap ramp, we'll probably have to have it for AD approvals, so it'll probably come out, but he'll just match it on this side as well, so it may not mess around as we'd like it to be, but he's got some of his. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be nice to have that done. That's in that ARPA page there.
I'll do that fairly quickly, actually, after the audio stuff.
Yeah.
Shannon?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure, uh, that I am on the same page with all the other commissioners, uh, we're getting a bad storm here at my house, and it's cutting a little bit in and out. Uh, on the capital projects funding, did you, did you, I, I'm, I may have missed this, I know y'all probably discussed it, but the animal control shelter, the courthouse renovations, the Board of Elections building, Wanaka Green Box site, and Pinnacle Green Box site, uh, and all five of those, are they going through the American, I'm sure y'all discussed this, but like I say, I'm getting cut out with this storm here, uh, is that all going through the American Rescue Plan?
Every, everything, with the exception of anything to do with the courthouse. The courthouse is, is gonna be funded, if it's approved, with the $2 million courthouse renovations grant from the state.
Right.
And they'll have to finance that $6 million, preferably with the USDA loan, what will go out, once that's approved, start looking for that funding. But everything else, yes, would be ARPA.
So animal control, Board of Elections, Green Box sites at Wanaka and Pinnacle, that's all American Rescue?
Correct, yes.
And, and that is in our budget, that is in our budget now at this point.
Yes, if you look at your capital projects fund sheet, which is the next to last sheet, page 87.
That's what I'm looking at.
You can see the courthouse renovations, 8 million there, Wanaka Green Box site, 350, and then down for sources of revenue is where you can see everything. 600, 6 million from financing, 2 million from a SCIF, the grant for the courthouse renovations, and 250,000 in a grant, the SCIF grant from the state.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that is, cur, I mean, that is staying, I, I guess I'm asking all the commissioners and you, that, that at this point is staying in our budget, correct?
You're correct, the commissioners, yeah, and, yeah, and then, and under the capital, I think, that might be something that, that needs to be moved through. If you look at the capital projects fund, I know we were changing some of these fast today, the animal control building, under capital projects fund.
Yeah.
I don't see it listed there anymore.
It's all the moment.
Right, we did, but like where you've got the other ones as sources of revenue, do we still not have to show them there, or would you just move them back once we, you just got them strictly in ARPA? Yeah, they're, those are just strictly in ARPA, cause they're not, the other ones that are listed in capital have other sources of funding, like the SCIF grant and the state grant.
Gotcha.
What's the source of funding for the demolition?
AR, ARPA.
Okay.
Yeah, ARPA.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, do we need to move on to the school stuff?
You're ready, I'm ready.
I don't have any other topics written down.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to look at equipment and personnel sheets before we quit today.
Okay.
Go through those, maybe at the end, or.
Yeah, that's true. Um, you wanna direct me where you wanna start with school, do you wanna start, you wanna talk about the capital?
My own?
Or the, or the current, or?
I think the capital might be easier to talk about, because from what I heard in the meeting, and this is just me listening to them, was that they were expecting, um, looking at what they knew with the source, funding sources and everything, that they were looking at thinking they were gonna get around 27.
That was the 2, 2,763, cause that was, that was what they first funded.
Yeah, 763, and that seemed like, you know, cause then you start getting into all that HVAC stuff that, um, we were talking about, maybe setting up a contingency force, so one, one thought would be to fund the 2,763, and then take the difference from what Shannon's recommendation was, and set that aside in a, in a capital contingency HVAC type fund, um, to kinda get that started, and then there may be more money we could add into that from some other line items, or from some other, um, not line items, but sources that, that, um, there may be some leftover sales tax, like you said, the three months hold over.
Now, there's, we left 40,000 in there, and we took out the 1.2 to fund that 3.6 with, and if you did what, if you did that, what you're saying, and you put it down to the 2,763, that would take, that would leave 902,000, which would technically still be the fund balance, not allocating that anymore, um, total, not counting what's gonna come in that's been held back from the sales tax, which I guess in terms of what they were stating would pay for one, one HVAC, possibly.
Possibly.
$1 million.
Because in that top 22, that would be the top 22 items, is that roof at Pine Hall that they, some of them have told me that they were probably hold off on this year. Uh, the money would be there, should they choose to do it, but I'm just saying, they might, might be holding off on that till they see what the enrollment looks like for the next year. So I don't know that they're gonna do that right away, but it's in there. But also, it's in there, if they don't do it, there's other purposes they could use it for. That would be up to them. So I don't know, that's just a thought.
Can I follow up with you?
Yes, go ahead.
Actually, actually, I started asking, and I didn't do it before they left, but you're right there, nine, when you go, go through the list, the number twenty-two, item twenty-two, which is what they said they were kind of expecting, that leaves nine hundred and two thousand. I was wondering if they were just going to skip the HVACs and then pick out some other things, you know, after the HVAC, starting with line item thirty, let me see, what was it?
Yeah, if you get down to line thirty-five.
Line thirty-five, I guess. Or whether they would hold that for an emergen, they've got emergency of a hundred and fifty thousand in line item number one already.
Right, right.
So, um, I guess you could hold that, and, and this money goes to them, period.
Yeah, it can't be used for anything else.
If we hold it, it's still going to them, so.
If you, if you choose to keep that nine hundred and two thousand dollars and just do the two million seven hundred and sixty-three, it's going to stay in their fund balance with whatever else is coming in, with those other sales tax dollars.
Yeah, or we could let them hold it, I don't, I, my philosophy when I was county manager, just let them keep it if it's going to be theirs anyway, but.
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what I recommended. That's what I recommended to do.
And then you'll keep the fund balance for anything it builds up here, in addition to that.
Right, if it builds, builds in there, we would keep it in addition for that, but we still wouldn't be anywhere near what they would need if they, if an HVAC.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
If they did go ahead and fund, like you were saying, other items in their list with the three point six that didn't build a contingent, or emergency plan for an HVAC breaking, then, you know.
All right, that's the only reason I would say to, to put it in reserve, it's theirs, if they need it, you know, but kind of, it's a little cushion in the HVAC situation if, if that happens. I don't know. Any other thoughts, Andy, you got any thoughts on that? Mr. Minnethall, do you have any thoughts on the capital side?
Uh, Madam Chair, I've looked over this two or three times, and similar to your thinking, uh, you know, there's so many hitting in there, uh, requests, uh, but of course, we know you were suggesting possibly, uh, uh, contingency or putting it in a reserve for HVAC if, uh, it come up, uh, I just, I don't know if, um, I don't know if we have a solution right now for HVAC, uh, I really don't, I've been given a lot of thought, and gee, how many, uh, Madam Chair, how many HVACs were there?
Um, I think there's nine, there's nineteen million, but I don't
There's twelve listed right here in a row.
Yeah, twelve systems, nineteen million.
Nineteen million's the number, the dollar count on them. There's twelve, twelve, twelve HVACs.
Yeah, I'm just thinking this, uh, Commissioner Cox is, um, with, uh, there's, it's an impossibility really to, uh, come up with a plan on the HVAC unless you did do something like a reserve, and I don't know if that's feasible or not. However, if you, just sort of like y'all said, if you skip down, you start getting into, if you skip to thirty-five, which is, says academic, South Stokes, New Greenhouse, and then if you start working your way down from that point, you got owning, painting, uh, things that are a lot less, um, a lot less, uh, expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, let's say, let's face it, painting, uh, and owning, they're not, I mean, I'm not saying they're cheap, but they're things that could possibly be, um, with that, um, so that's about all I've got to say right now, that I, with HVAC in there, it's sort of a mixed bag of, mixed bag right now.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. Shannon stepped out for just a minute. Mr. Moore, she got anything else to add on that?
Yeah, I guess I would think, I, I just had a thought that I didn't have the other day, but if we gave, if we just did Shannon's recommendation, then they'd have nine hundred and two plus a hundred and fifty for emergencies, for their capital. And we, and we, we look at these HVACs, we're talking in terms of, if anything happens to it, you got to replace it. Well, that may not be the case, there's, there's that twelve there, you know, they, they could have a failure in one of them that you could repair temporarily versus replacing it, so that'd give them a million something dollars to, to, to keep those twelve going, because the other piece of it is they're looking at all these other options that they're going supposedly come back with about schools and all that.
That's right.
And I don't know which ones of these fit in, would fit into some of those options.
True, when the facility study's completed, that may give them a better
They give it a different slant, so.
Idea.
I just, I would just give them what Shannon recommended, and tell them to make sure that stuff keeps working for the next year.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like you say, whether we hold it, or whether they hold it, it's
And it's their discretion of how they use it anyway, right?
Exactly.
I had, I had, on my phone, I had an emergency SOS that said my mom was, sent me her emergency location. Oh, I called to make sure, my dad said, yeah, she did it on accident, she called nine-one-one, but Wyatt sent us all messages, I don't know.
She has test technology.
Yeah, I saw it, I was like, what? Gave me her exact location, okay.
What I just said, Shannon, just to bring you up speed, is that if we gave the nine oh two plus the one fifty that's already in there for emergencies, the fact that a HVAC, one of these HVACs has a problem doesn't automatically mean we got to replace it right then, it could be something we could fix. And then the fact that they're looking at options, other things that could, you know, directly impact which one of these HVACs is, is, or has a problem or something, then I would just give them what you recommend and let, tell them to try to either save it for HVAC emergencies or spend it on something else, but be, be prepared for the HVAC.
Just to know that we don't have any, we don't have a large, a large fund balance here like that.
That would do, that would take care of, um, the HVAC contingency I was talking about, if you give it to them, it'd be their HVAC contingency.
Right, I'm ready, good.
And they can hold it, whatever, um,
Agreed.
Whatever, whichever way, that's fine, but, um, and like I said, there's also that seven hundred thousand dollar roof that's in there, whether they choose to do it or, or they don't this year, it's there, um, they asked for it, and it's part of the funding that's recommended, so they can choose. We got thunder and lightning up here, too, Ronnie.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm getting a severe storm right here also.
Yeah.
Lightning just came in on my telephone, in fact.
You got that on speakerphone?
I had it on speaker, I'm putting it off.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out this way to keep talking and, uh, keep the lightning from running in.
Gotcha. Okay, well, let's move over to current expense for a minute, look at that.
Um, so are we feeling like we're pretty set on the capital, just to?
I don't see, I mean, either way, it's
Yeah, I guess they're, they're funded, so, yeah. Um, on the, on the current expense, I know you all remember from the meeting, then speaking about that additional funds that they were asking for, and that they would take away the six hundred thousand in new request, that would still leave the one point four, which they were stating to remain whole for this year, while they're figuring out what they are going to be moving forward. Um, you know, with that option we talked about on, if you wanted to fund them with some of your, or the remainder really is what you'd have to, you know, the ARP funds, the eight forty-three, even if you funded them with the remainder of your ARP of eight hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and five, that would still leave five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, five sixty, five hundred and fifty-six thousand ninety-five dollars would be unfunded. Um, and I guess their option would be, if you chose to do that, to fund that difference with some of that fund balance they spoke about, and I know that
The remaining they've got.
They got two million two ninety-one left unassigned, even after the things that she listed, that Miss Moore listed, they wanted to do with some of the others, still leaves twenty-two ninety-one unassigned. So I know the circumstances by which they got that fund balance, but I, I still think, I mean, that's quite a bit of fund balance, and if, if all they were looking at is that five fifty-six oh ninety-five to stay whole, if you all were willing to put in that additional funding, and that would, but that would be all of the ARPA, so it would be gone. Um, you know, or you can look at other options, and you know, those options would be to finance something that you're looking at ARP with, but use that money to shift to them, which is going to, you know, increase your debt next year, next, whenever that financing takes place, or to reduce more from general fund, but I, you know, I, if I was, if I was, my, my opinion or recommendation would be, if you're going to do that, if you're going to try to get them to that one point four, would be to do it with the remainder of that ARP, and then have them look at maybe funding the rest of it, that five fifty-six.
Like that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And the, and the, and the saving ARP money for matching is not, that's just one use that would be a good use, but, but at the same time, if we have a really good grant opportunity, we'll match it some other way, we can always match it some other way, so.
Yeah, we're going to come up with it, so.
Yeah.
And I mean, I can't see that they would, I mean, I can't see they would have any issue with
Well, I think they would realize that we're in the same boat as they are, as far as inflation and not knowing the future, and our fuel costs, and, and things of, of, um, what we could be facing, the unknowns, so we can't just, I don't see how we could do much more than that.
I mean, we have, we, we may have a really wild year before we get back here again.
We may.
Yeah.
I'm kind of scared for the next year.
These economists are talking.
I think we're, I, I'll be really surprised if we come in with these demon sales tax numbers, and, because people are just not, the gas prices are just crippling everybody, people are not able to
Well, we might be buying rabbit traps.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we got all this stuff budgeted, we don't have to spend it right away, we could wait a little bit on some of these things, where there's, we can wait, and kind of see how things pan out the next few months.
Because the fall's going to be tricky, by the fall, I think.
The interest rates just went up what, over a cent yesterday, a quarter percent yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
We're going up another three-quarter foot point next month.
Probably.
So our fuel come down in October.
They'll never go back to what it was, though, probably. That's why they put it way up, so then when they bring it down just a little bit, we're like, oh, boy. Mr. Minnethall, do you have any, uh, more, anything else with the current expense you'd like to add, or, or any comments on what Shannon's recommendation is, or comments were?
No, I'm, I'm good with what all y'all said, I was listening, I, I haven't gone slick, so.
You're just making sure the lightning didn't take you out.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for your concern, but no, I, uh, I heard everything, and, uh, I'm good with what all y'all said.
Right, it's the question, we want to fund the better home level, and we want anybody to, you know, them to have to look at cutting positions, and they've got a tough year ahead, looking at what they're going to do moving forward, and we get that facility study hopefully within this year, and they can start making, you know, probably even be in need at some point during even the year for the boards to sit back down together, weigh in on the budget.
Yeah, once we get that facility study, and they have time to digest it, I'd like to do a joint meeting with them, just to
Good idea. And maybe they'll have some options they're looking at by then.
Yeah, sure.
I don't, I think, as far as the big stuff, schools and all that, that's, I think that's everything that I had notes on, on what I had from last time to bring back.
What were the other things, Mr., Commissioner Moore, she wanted to look at?
Equipment and personnel, I think, is that what?
Yeah, let me just scan through those real quick with you and make sure, um, ask it one or two questions.
Like, playing my way out of Danbury today, just in case I can't get out.
There's a divide, there's a divided, um, in the attachments at the front, there's a divided equipment list and a divided, um, personnel list, if that helps, not have to try to, there's a salaries list and an equipment list.
Yeah, the equip, yeah, the equipment list.
Want to start with equipment?
Tell me what page you're on, so I can
If you go to the very front of the budget.
Okay.
Let pass the budget message.
Attachment two.
Get into the attachments.
Attachment two, it's the equipment.
Attachment two, okay.
I'm with you. You'll see equipment, I think it might be three, there you go.
All right.
Hey, one, that one, just two or three quick, there's one that, we've got, under the register of needs, we've got an ID marker slash printer, and then on the page before that, we, HR has an ID badge maker, those, I assume those are totally different things.
They're sharing the cost.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, they're going to share the cost, because Gil, in HR, they need it for employee badges, they also have a need in register of needs, they have a sort of program called, um, and then you're the veterans, they make veterans' cards for them, that certain businesses, he's, Brandon's trying to cover their game starters.
I think Brandon told us about this, didn't he?
Yeah, it's really neat, it's like a
When he comes out with an update.
There's, there's, businesses kind of go in together, and the card has a thing identifying them.
Veteran IDs, that's a good idea.
Same bed or something, but they would, they would share the cost of that and, and use that machine, just
Okay, yeah, I think I remember Brandon saying it now, too, come to think of it. But on the body cameras, um, that, that, does that do seventy thousand for ARP funds, does that do everything for, I mean, does that, for every deputy, they'll have a body camera? Y'all remember the details of that, on the sheriff's department?
Body cameras they put in, and I know there is an annual cost to those as well, that's not just the, this is, this is the cost to purchase body cameras, and then there's some software that will be
Recurring cost, yeah.
Recurring cost.
If I'm not mistaken, when I talked to sheriff, uh, previous sheriff, Mike Marshall, about this, uh, a couple budgets ago, when it's somebody, body cameras seem to start becoming a big thing, he said just the storage fee on this was like half a million dollars, that's the reason why he never submitted it to us in the budget, because it was just something that wasn't a reasonable request with us.
I don't, I don't, it was that much, but we can, I can look back.
It came down every time, with cloud-based stuff.
I think it's definitely a, a, a great value in need when you needed the footage from it.
Yeah, it protects officers
I think we all be doing them, I'm just curious.
I can look, maybe if we take a break in a minute, I can look at our, um, other budget that we worked on with all the specific requests, and see exactly how many body cameras were built into that seventy thousand.
Yeah, I thought it was also stored in the cloud, but I, I wouldn't
I think that's the difference now, in two years past, too, is so many things are cloud-based now that we're not, that we're required to have additional servers, which would have probably been very expensive.
Yeah.
I think it's cloud, all cloud-based now, but I can confirm that number of body cams when we take a look.
You could even do it, you could even do it next time if you want to, you don't have to do it today. I was just curious about it, I want to make sure he's, we got the full picture, and that I support him using the body cams, I think that's something he needs to do.
New York, Guilford County's doing those handheld scanner things for, they're bad at, in their budget, uh, for some of the schools to get these handheld scanners, some type of new, uh, artificial intelligence, um, technology scanner things for weapons and things, yeah, I mean, see how that, I mean, I think it's good, and it might be something the schools look at for next year, if they'll, see how it's working other places, something for them to consider, anything to make the schools safer.
There's a couple, I, there was, I know there was one thing with the, the offices that we, the sheriff's office, but I see ARPA beside it, something in one of those body armor that we didn't do with ARPA because of the We get, we get refunds back We get refunds back. From our insurance. Is that? That should be four, that was like four thousand. It still says ARPA fund beside it, though. I think we put it in there, I don't think it's still going to hurt us, but again, our refund. We still get, okay, so we can still get our refund even if we pay for it with ARPA, okay.
Okay, that's, that's all I had on equipment, I think. On personnel, I think we talked about these sheriff's deputies and all this, these additions that you recommended previously.
Right.
Um, building and maintenance, uh, on Stacy's, Stacy's, uh, two physicians, those are based on just caseloads, probably?
Three thousand additional caseloads in food and nutrition alone is what they've got right now, and we're getting ready to do some professional services money and contract with Vanguard, to get them called up, they've got everybody down there that's even in the, that's working in the building, in any capacity, processing cases, they're, they're really backlogged, and they, they
Then they got the Medicaid Medicare expansion.
Right, when that, that's probably going to pass, and when it goes through, she could possibly be here asking for other physicians, because that's going to really impact their Medicaid units.
Yeah.
We sort of talked back and forth about maybe putting them in this
They should.
Well, they give you, Medicaid is seventy-five, Medicaid physicians are seventy-five percent state, twenty-five percent county, so the county part of all this is not huge, so if they are needed, if they end up, but we decided to not put those in this budget, and wait and see what that does to that program, but evaluate that at that time.
Uh-huh.
That's all I have then, I think. Other than Lisa handed out this sheet, I think, dealing with our financial model, we can just talk about that next time.
Yeah, I think that's a little bit of a question that was asked. And so she just reached out to Andrew Carter and got him to give kind of a, a look into that model and how it works and what, what it, what funds it and what it funds.
Okay. I'll just check it for next time.
Um, so we have one more budget meeting scheduled next week.
Yeah, and I, I mean, unless you all feel differently, I, I feel like, I don't feel like we need to schedule an additional meeting unless or something, or not picking up.
I think one more, the next one should be able to wrap it up.
Have a budget ordinance ready at that next one or a draft, final.
We can have a draft, yeah, yeah. After pretty much ready and then we can take a break and, you know, tweak what we had to finalize, but.
The final budget vote would be at the last meeting in June, June 27.
In the past, you voted on the budget at the last budget meeting, um, to approve it and then approve the budget ordinance at your last meeting in June.
All right.
Or we can get an ordinance ready and do it there, it's, it's whatever.
At every place.
And, and I want to be Lisa's level of comfort, she likes to, which I totally like because we've called a lot of things, she likes to check and recheck, so she might feel more comfortable doing the budget ordinance at the last meeting in June, so she's got time to really make sure all those numbers.
Yeah, that's a good idea, that's what I would do.
Sometimes it's hard to go in there and do it in 10 minutes and come back and be sure.
Yeah, I agree.
Might have caught some of these little other things ahead of time, so.
We're not really sure what Julia did when she did that.
She was good, but I'll tell you, I don't know how anyone kept.
Looking her magic, but.
That's a nightmare, a big mistake you made and didn't catch in time.
Sure is.
Not good.
And I really, I feel like in this budget process with us all working together and looking at it, I, I'm really hopeful that we're not going to see the volume of budget amendments that we've seen in the past. I feel like we've got some good numbers.
Catching it on the front end, that's good.
We're catching a lot of stuff on the front end, as long as fuel doesn't like, you know, go to $10 a gallon and I'll take across my fingers, we, we should, we should be in pretty good shape.
We'll see when the house of cards collapses.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
What that does.
So do you want us to just, maybe we can talk about it at the next meeting, but maybe if we get a number of those body cams, just email you that number so you can have it.
Right.
Just the recurring cost for them, yeah.
And, uh, how many, like, how many?
How many?
Yeah, I don't know how that works. I don't know if you have one assigned per deputy or if.
Assigned for shift.
Yeah, exactly, I don't know how they do that.
Might be like the road officers, you trade them out, I'm not sure.
I don't know either, yeah.
I'll ask those questions and I'm not sure either.
Okay, just make sure he's got enough to, to cover his knees, that's the main thing.
Anything else? Mr. Minnethall, do you have any other comments?
No ma'am, I think, uh, I think we're very close to, uh, as everybody said, I think we're very close to having it ready for the ordinance to come about. And, uh, I think we're well on our way to finishing it up.
I think so too.
Yes.
All right, if there isn't anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.